So the petitioners would like to come forward?
Have an element for this.
Right there.
Right there.
So while Steve sets up, I'm Jim Martin for Council Petitioner. This is Steve Royer from the Petitioner. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, a point of clarification. When we were here before you the last time in connection with this client, it was not for site plan at all, but it was for a recommendation on a zone change.
Right.
And the board then made its recommendation known. We then went to the town council. The town council in the interim had sent it to the subcommittee. And then after that issue, the subcommittee made a report. This decision came out. So with the cooperation of the town and my client, we stayed presenting the final petition to this town council. So they never voted actually on the request for a zone change. Just for the public record.
Sure.
And as I said, this is Steve Royer, and he's here tonight on behalf of the developer to give you an overview presentation on the development at the location. I think since you heard the zone change and other things, you're familiar with the site. It's listed as Zero Peas Road. And it's on the buffer on the borderline of Summers and East Long Meadow.
Computer's telling me that my battery's running low. Do we need a solar panel?
Oh.
Pass it over here. Sorry.
No, 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 you're okay. It's just when I move the table.
Oh, we might have.
I unplug this because I got you.
All right. There we go.
You got it?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Orange dot. Good evening. I am Steve Royer with EcoSynergy. I am here to present the revised site plan. I know that there's a lot of back history on this project. I was recent, I was not presenting previously. A lot of my work in the last three years has been in the Northeast, constructing solar farms in Connecticut, Vermont, as well as Massachusetts. This project wasn't in my purview, but as we move forward, I have taken it open. So right now, I'm going to present basically all of the information that was sent to you guys about a month and a half ago for review. And then we can open it up to questions as you deem fit. So the background of EcoSynergy is we are the development arm of Alco Renewable Energy Limited. We own and operate all our projects. Currently, we have 25 up and operating across the country through all the states listed below. And we have 44 megawatts of distributed solar generation all throughout the United States. Currently, we have four sites under construction in the state of Connecticut that are totaling nine megawatts. Those will be energized, a couple of them before the end of this year, and then the other two in Q1 of 2020. These are recent photos of projects that we have constructed in the Northeast. This is a 2.2-megawatt facility in Subbury, Vermont that was constructed in 2017. This is a four-megawatt facility in Spencer, Massachusetts, a very similar size to the project that we are proposing here today, also similar topography. This is a six-megawatt facility that was completed in 2019 in Lebanon and Franklin, Connecticut, and that is the largest facility we have constructed as of today. This is the parcel, parcel 3310. That's a picture of the assessor's map in the site. State line is obviously to the south of the parcel. Below that parcel, we do own land that has been approved by the Connecticut Siting Council approximately three years ago, and construction on that facility has begun. Surrounding the parcel are three parcels owned by Western Mass Electric, which ultimately is ever-source energy, as well as a 110-kV transmission line that bisects all those Western Mass parcels and kind of isolates this site. Redstone Farms parcel is to the north, and we have a residential neighborhood here and here.
Is he owner of Redstone?
I looked it up. John somebody.
Pearson.
John Pearson.
John Pearson.
Thank you.
This is the updated ALTA survey for the project that was submitted, revised by Martinez Couch, and updated for this submission. Some of the relevant site maps is the FEMA floodplain. There is no floodplain in the site, the National Historic Preservation, as well as endangered species. There is nothing that was identified on the parcel there. This is the total parcel of land that we own currently. And right now, in Connecticut, eight megawatts is slated to be constructed here. Our construction of the facility right now that is occurring is about in this footprint right here. I know that there was concern, review sheds of the site from other parcels. This is a cross-section that was basically cut through Google Earth. This shaded area right here is basically this property line here, and then this property line here. This gap right here is the clearing of trees. Each one of these grids in a vertical element is about, is 25 feet. So your residential homes over here, sightline up that hill, likely will be screened, just also given this distance from the facility. This distance in total is, I think, around 360 feet. I also cut another cross-section from Hallen Terrace, which is up here, and also a similar view shed. That's that gap right there in the trees for the transmission line, and this shaded area is the facility footprint. This is the current project site plan that was submitted. In essence, the approval from the Connecticut Siting Council has our road ending here. We're going to connect to it and project it approximately another 350 feet further to the north. There are estimated about 12,000 solar modules. We do have a concept electrical design for the facility, but solar change is quarterly depending on the availability of modules, wattages, et cetera. The modules that we were installing three years ago were almost 35%, 40% less efficient than the modules we're installing now. So you can increase production or, in essence, shrink your footprint to have a similar output of energy from the facility. These black lines represent basically the only location we'll be doing excavation and trenching. And all of the wiring is ultimately up in the racking of the solar panels and then drops into the ground and is basically wired in series into inverters, et cetera. One of the things that we need to do is have a contiguous slope. The site is basically a high point at the roadway and falls off to the east and west. That contiguous slope is so that we don't have undulations and racking. That racking has to follow the linear line, or your modules can't be installed appropriately, or you have to start breaking them, and you lose efficiencies in the install. So right now, the slope of this site is anywhere from 15 to, you know, up at the top where you don't see these contours. It's rare, in essence, fairly flat.
Move to where I can see this without creating.
Yeah, sorry. This is about a, this is a project that is currently under construction, actually, in Bennington, Vermont. And this is a contiguous slope that I was trying to explain, and that slope right there is falling in that 16% cent range. So that gives you an idea of what the racking install looks like. And then most of our wiring is tucked behind the racking itself, and then at the end roads is, it goes underground. A stormwater report was submitted for the project. Originally, this site was an apple orchard, and this table below is probably the most pertinent part of that stormwater report. Solar panels are not impervious. They, in essence, act like a deck. The water falls on them, then hits the ground and continues its natural path of drainage. That element has been debated, and, you know, hydrology from the sites that we've had, it's obvious that the ground is still going to infiltrate the land that it falls on, or the water's going to still infiltrate. It's not like a, it's impervious parking lot of three acres. It may visually look like that from above, but we still have full growth under our panels, and the ground acts like a metal from the hydrology report. There is a slight requirement for water quality basins at 280 and 250 cubic feet, which is a really, really small basin. And at that point, I think if we run into construction issues, it's usually during construction, and putting additional erosion control and elements like that during the construction versus a long-term water quality pond, given the runoff, it just doesn't make So there's two types of roads that we will build on these projects. This picture again is from a project in Bennington, Vermont that was under construction. Permanent facilities are going to typically be aggregate. That's that main road. When we do remove trees, we will chip and grind them and keep them on-site. They work as great erosion control. The site will be perimeter silt fenced with wireback and hay bales. It's just a, it's an extra level of design and safety instead of just standard silt The other thing that's really critical is we will build woodchip roads internal to the facility where we have a fair amount of traffic, such as all the modules getting delivered to the arrays, et cetera. And then one thing that we found is ongoing hydroseeding or hay and strawing throughout the duration of construction. If the contractors aren't staying on top of erosion issues, they come up and become issues. So constant hydroseeding and taking care of traffic and backdragging during rows on a weekly basis is basically our standard now for construction. This is a profile of the proposed racking. It's about six and a half feet off the ground. Those are two modules in portrait, so you'll have a module here and a module here. The leading edge of that module is about 36 inches. It's, the pile is driven with a pneumatic hammer. That's a W6x9 I-beam. You typically see in building construction. And that pile is driven to about four feet out of the ground, and then the solar racking is installed on top of that.
Can I ask a question at this point?
You bet.
Last time you came before us, they were talking about doing these on pads, not actually putting them into the ground.
Oh, like a ballast scenario?
Yes, that was the original design.
But this is the new design.
Yeah, so given our construction that has occurred in our investigation of subsurface that has happened right to the south in Connecticut, that is the facility that we're building currently in Connecticut. That driven I-beam and that, that design is much more cost-effective. The other thing that if we do ballast the whole site, we recently built a ballast project last year, more in a softer ground scenario, as well as in a time of year that needed an accelerated construction schedule, and we were worried about subsurface rocks. So what that does is that will introduce more impervious because you actually have a concrete footprint. We're taking that away to keep that impervious level as much as we can. And given our success of the three megawatts installed, this is the racking that we would prefer to proceed with.
Thank you.
So this is a zoom-in of where that underground low voltage, when I say low voltage, that's usually 800 volts or less, is installed. The facility that we are using is using an ABV inverter, so there would be a total of 24 of these on the site, co-located, identically like this. This is actually the project that I was out at a couple days ago that is currently under construction. As you can see, it's not completely wired, as well as that transformer switchgear pad. So there's going to be two pad locations, one right in the south end of the site and then one at a midpoint. You can kind of see that the facility is broken up into basically two two-megawatt footprints. Each one of those pads will have a main switchgear that all of these, so those two are the inverters, they go into a combiner box and ultimately home run to this main switchgear. This is a two-megawatt transformer. Those two are run in series, and our interconnection is run to the west, out to not Rear Peace Road, but Shaker. Here is the area of interconnection, and this is Shaker Road. We'll have a small turnoff drive. This is a recloser that will be owned by the utility. That's basically a two-way switch. It monitors current voltage power that comes in and leaves the site and keeps that site in balance. If something goes off, it automatically switches off. That second pole right here is actually a pole-mounted meter. We've kind of left it as either a pad-mounted or pole-mounted meter. And then ultimately, this little box here is a disconnect switch that's owned by us, and then we can turn that line off before it traverses across the site to our transformers.
Question here. That property is Western Mass?
That is correct.
Electric property?
Yep.
And the, so you'll be traversing their property to get down there to the thing?
Yep. We are currently in easement negotiations with them, and obviously, we'd have to have that in place before any construction occurs.
This site plan, this is not part of the site plan?
It is part of the package that was submitted to you guys. I can pull up the full set of plans as well. Basically, what I've done is taken this and taken snips of, I think, the more critical elements of the design.
Paul, is your question, this is not on our site, though?
It's not on your site.
Right, that is correct.
It's on somebody else's.
Yes.
So I assume you have permission from Western Mass Electric to put this in here?
Yes, we are working, we have an interconnection agreement, and we are working through the details of how this design is going to be finalized.
Okay, but we will at some point need a letter or something that says they're letting you do this.
Oh, definitely.
We'll have an easement.
Yeah, and we'll have an easement that's recorded and filed and goes through the ever-source and process, which is always entertaining. There's definitely a lot of benefits and impacts to solar energy. There's carbon benefits. The parcel land is fairly isolated with that 110-kV line surrounding it. It has no access really to the town of East Long Meadow, except through our site. And it seems like a fair location where this makes sense. There's no noise that's created, there's no lights at night. We have, once after construction, which is approximately a three-to-five-month period, our O&amp;M traffic is less than a residential home. Aesthetically, I do believe that it is somewhat hidden from residences. Obviously, there's probably people behind me that disagree. But there's an element here that, you know, in the long term, is it right? And I mean, my job is to build solar facilities, and I enjoy it, and I think it's good for the environment regardless of where you stand, and it just seems fitting. So that's the first project that we built in Minnesota, where ultimately I am from. And I guess ultimately, I'll open up to questions from you guys. I can pull this down and pull up the plan set as well, if you'd like me to do so, to go through any of that, but.
All right, through the chair.
Sure.
I would like to see a plan showing the setbacks and vegetated buffers.
Is there a proposal to fence this property?
Yes.
Yes.
So in that slide, we are proposing a seven-foot fence basically around the full perimeter of the site, which is detailed here. Some municipalities requiring a six-inch wildlife gap underneath it so that squirrels and animals can traverse, if that's an issue that you guys want to.
And that's the plan for the fencing, Mr. Chairman?
Straight up here.
Yep.
Can you find Mr. Kingston's slide?
Yep, I'm getting to it right now. So this is a zoom-in, essence of the project boundary. That dash line right here is a 50-foot setback. It is around the entire perimeter of the site, but for the Connecticut boundary. So that is the imposed setback on this parcel. This is the west side of the site, or the east side, and this is the west. So you'll see that setback. It's a small dash line that runs through the perimeter of the site. This is the tree line that we propose with clearing around the entire site as well, which is that little clouded line that you guys can see. So the, all the trees that are on-site, we will grind and keep on-site for erosion control. And then you can see all these other small spot gratings to get our slopes more contiguous.
Regarding setbacks, what are you considering to be your front of the lot, your sides and the rear?
It's a tricky question.
It is a tricky question. I went under the assumption that the front is facing the town of East Long Meadow. The front of a piece of land that is facing the state of Connecticut really isn't the front of a piece of land in the East Long Meadow.
Since it had an address of Zero Peas Road, we thought that was the front.
Okay, so your setbacks, front yard, side yard, rear yard are addressed that way?
Dressed that way, so, yes.
Okay, thank you. Still awaiting comments from DPW, as I understand it.
Right. So this is a public hearing, but before I open it in public, are there any other questions?
The board members? I did get comments from fire, and I can address those.
So through the chair, what happens if you don't get in time, the application in time for the SMART program? I mean, for the SMART program? And so you have, let's say you have approval, you're working on it, you don't get approval, or we're still working through this process, and all of the blocks fill up, and you don't?
We're, I mean, we're in the business to build solar projects.
No, no, but there are only so many allotments for the projects, right?
Yep, there'll be more.
Yeah.
So you're just going to hold it until SMART unveils phase three?
Right now, we, we're looking for, we don't become an applicable SMART program until we have some sort of line of approval. So at this point, we're trying to attain that.
Right, but what I'm saying is so the SMART phase one, SMART program filled up faster than the state thought it would, and what they thought would be a two-year initiative actually filled up probably, I can't remember exactly.
It was quick.
It was very, very quick.
Months, yes.
So let's say you don't quite make that window, yet the planning board does approve.
Yep.
What are you going to do with this parcel of land if you don't qualify for the incentives that are being offered?
We could still sell on open market. There's plenty of ways to sell power.
Okay, okay. So you would probably pursue the development?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a public hearing, so I'd like to open it up to the public, if anyone here would like to address this board.
I'll start. I'll start. Well, this is after I live on Peas Road, opposite end, although I do have quite a bit of land behind me, it is development, but not a lot of houses on it. First, I want everybody, I think we all understand this, solar energy is big money. They're not sitting here entirely because we're saving the earth with it. It's a wonderful thing. We put it on our homes. When I redo my roof, I'll put it on my home. But our hands are tied, and we know that our hands are tied. But I think that some of the things that I want to say about this is, the deer are going to have to walk around it, and the turkeys are going to jump over the fence. And you could put six inches underneath it, but that's a concern. I worry about how do they, how do they control the growth of the vegetation? The foreign fauna are going to be affected, the local birds that fly around. I mean, they're walking through my backyard, the deer. The turkeys are there, the birds are there, but if I had a solar farm behind me, nobody's going to be there. So I mean, that is, is one thing, and we look at Chestnut Street, it's burgeoning with solar panels in our industrial space, and that's where they belong, because that's where they belong. I look at Mill Street, and it makes me sick that farmland that had corn on it last year is being sectioned off for this. So I hope that the town, and maybe the town can join the other towns around us, because, you know, there's power in numbers, and our attorneys are going to have a hard time fighting the law. But if we get all the towns together and we work as a group, and all of our lawyers can hire the best lawyer possible, maybe we can at least have some say, because we have tremendous, tremendous property in this town. At Long Meadow, doesn't. No one's going to, you know, take down a home to put up the solar panels. But we have, they may, but we do have a lot of farmland and just open space in this town, and that's scary for us. And that's just all I have to say. I know our hands are tied. I know solar panels are a good thing. I know that we have to figure out how to integrate them into our lives. I know we have to work on our zoning bylaws, but at the same time, I don't like feeling like we're mean and awful because we don't want this, because we hate to make the world a better place, because we don't. We're trying to protect our town. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I have a comment at this point?
Yes.
I think the public needs to know that the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has established a solar study team, if you will, which Broders is on, and this consists of 43 cities and towns in the Pioneer Valley that are looking at this very issue of what is the current state law overly broad, giving overly broad protection, and how can that be addressed legislatively or in other ways? That's not going to affect this project, obviously, but it is being looked at and worked on, including the study of the issue of, does it make sense to cut down a forest of trees which are photosynthesizing to put up solar panels which are making electricity? And it brings a big question here, it's a big question in the hill towns as well, because the land is cheap, and people want to cut down all the forests and put up solar. So, I'm raising the Joni Mitchell song, but anyway.
But that's not a bargain.
I know.
And it's a recycling issue too, in 20 years.
Right, just to let, I'm not going to argue with you, I'm just letting you know what's going on right now.
No, that's good to hear. I appreciate that.
Okay, so there is some action being worked on, but it's not going to happen overnight. Are there other members of the public that would like to?
You guys are more exciting than NCIS TV. Just a few questions first. And looking at the solar panels, I know, I think, a few articles I've read, a lot of these farms are being built with cheap panels from China, and a lot of these panels are becoming defective within five years, leaching chemicals into the soil. Some of these chemicals are cancer-causing agents. Has the health department looked at that? Have you discussed it with the health department? That would be interesting. Also, something that recycling was mentioned. Lifespan of these solar panels are 25, 30 years or more. With that, I know Washington State has gone in and required recycling contracts, recycling agreements that if agreements that if these do go bad, that they are removed. I don't know if there's a possibility of insurance that can be put up to cover this, just in case. But I would look at what type of panels are going to go on this farm. I'm not against this. Everybody's crying climate change, so I think, you know, any way we can save money and meet national grid, that's great, but I think it's something that should be addressed before a project goes up about what are we putting onto our property here in East Long Meadow? Thank you.
I can speak to some of that. One, a decommissioning bond report was delivered to you guys, and that was basically a carbon copy of what I did three years ago with the town of Spencer. It was reviewed by a third-party engineer. I added inflation for the last three years of change in price of steel, et cetera. When it comes to our solar panels, we do own these facilities. We own them for the long haul of the operation. Right now, a 20-year PPA is pretty typical for what we do. There are tiers when you purchase solar panels that banks look at from a tier one, tier two, tier three. We only purchase tier-one panels. They may be coming from China, they may be coming from out of the United States. But for us to purchase panels that are of that lowest quality and also wanna own and operate a facility as a revenue generator for the next 20 years, it doesn't make financial sense for us to go purchase something that may fail. And, you know, after owning 44 megawatts worth of projects and 25 different projects, we have had modules that have failed, we have had them replaced. But in our recent, because of those issues, we've changed to the quality of product that we're putting in the ground. The products that we are putting in just to the south are ABB Italian-made inverters, which are some of the highest-quality inverters currently manufactured, and we're using LG solar modules. And they are a tier-one, top-of-the-line solar module with typically a three-to-eight month lead time depending on when you place that order, because of the demand for them and because of the bankability of them.
Are there other members of the public who would like to address the planning board?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Ralph Page, reside at 306 Prospect Street. I own the property at 137 P's Road. It's down the other end. I'd like to first comment that I am here as a citizen of the town. I am not in here in any official capacity. You mentioned earlier that you're looking at extending a roadway into this facility. Could you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
I mean, are we actually putting a road into it, or are you putting a driveway into it?
Service.
Yeah, it's gonna be a gravel driveway.
Gravel service road.
Yep. So, you can kinda see from this site plan, this is, this site will be accessed actually off of Bilton Road. Through our existing facility to the north. And right now, we're, we're gonna build a hammerhead or a firetruck turnaround right here for this Bilton Road, Connecticut project. If this project passes through, we'll continue that gravel road further to the north.
And the reason I ask is, the town has standards for roadways. I would assume a gravel driveway is not gonna meet those standards. I believe the DPW has a whole list for roadways. With that being said, in the state of Massachusetts, how much frontage do you have on a right-of-way?
There is no frontage, and I actually tried to talk to Constance about that. Is where is our frontage? We don't have frontage to this site.
And that's part of my point. Under residential double A, 175-foot of frontage is required, and that is in the state of Massachusetts. If someone was to get injured on this site, the only access, I'm assuming then, would be through the state of Connecticut.
Correct.
Correct.
So, I would look to the board to say if any development was to be put there, any structure or bylaw mandates frontage, frontage on an approved way. This property doesn't have it. I know the court, I've read the court case. Court case specifically talked about coverage. Obviously, a 25% lot coverage would not apply here. I mean, I believe that's why the court mentioned it, but I think it's extremely important that we have access to the site through our town so that if an ambulance has to get there or something, we don't have to go out of state. I know the Bilton Road property very well, I grew up in the area, I've hunted this area. I actually just got through working for the neighbor, one of the Biltons up there. And it, it's a little trip out of town to get there. I mean, I'm not saying it's 20 minutes or anything like that, but I'm saying for an ambulance, if someone got injured up there, it would be difficult. I think there's a reason that we have frontage requirements in double A, and I would hope the board would consider that before they approve this. Thank you.
We did receive comments from your fire marshal, and one of them was adding an additional hammerhead turnaround, and the other one was relating to the height of grass underneath the modules that was outlined in our own M-plan. When it comes to the access, we also reached out to the town of Somers to see if that they would cover this for fire, and it's something that they would explore as well. Given what that gentleman said, basically, this is a non-buildable lot. Is what I'm, what he would like us to hear, I'm assuming, because it has no frontage, but it's a piece of lot in the town of East Long Meadow.
Are there other members of the public that would like to address the board? Yes?
Good evening, Craig Jernstrom, 799 Parker Street. I believe I received a package, I serve on the commission in town, that had the information from Connecticut and their rulings in this one, and wasn't there a mention in there about a wetland on the property in East Long Meadow? But I haven't seen that in the plans, and I believe it was stated you're staying 100 feet away from it, and was curious if you were planning on filing a notice of intent for this?
Yeah, so that wetland delineation was, was performed on, in 2016 by Pietrus Environmental. We had another wetland specialist with, and now I just feel mistaken that I don't know his name. New England Environmental Design in 2018 went out and investigated that wetland again. You can see that in the, in the ALTA on note number 11. Both of those wetlands that were identified were man-made and non-connected. And I can provide that report, but that is why this ALTA was updated, is because of New England Environmental's reassessment of wetlands.
So those wetlands have been removed?
They have been removed.
Recently?
They haven't been taken out, but they have been removed from a delineation. That is correct.
Were they farmed, is that what it was?
Yes.
It had been two years, Craig, so we'll be happy to, we're not looking to run from it, we're just going by what he told us two years later.
So at this point, you're not planning on filing a notice of intent for this project?
Well, based on saying there aren't any wetlands on it, we didn't think it was necessary.
Just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, yeah.
That is correct.
But if somebody, you know, if we have evidence otherwise, well, we'd be happy to come before the conservation officials get it addressed. But that's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there other members?
I know yourself a question. How do you maintain the level of the grass underneath? Because I know, like, when I would drive by, because I go down Mill Road, the plants that they put around it had grass grown up as high as everything else, but on the actual solar, there was nothing growing. So how do you maintain that? What do they use or do?
We do two things. We will have a typical O&amp;M contract. Once we energize, we have somebody that monitors the site for any faults, shutdowns, et cetera, as well as just plowing, maintaining emergency access, as well as mowing. Once those, that growth gets above the solar panels, it starts taking away from our energy production. So, it, it, there's no advantage to let it grow higher. One, it's more expensive to mow, and two, you lose production. So we'll do that, and we also, in some of our projects in California, as well as that Sudbury site in Vermont, we're starting to graze sheep. And so we'll have a sheep herder come out and actually section off sections of the site and spend a couple of weeks on the site and graze throughout the entire site.
So do you use chemicals at all?
No. Yeah, like, at our Wyndham site, there was a guy weed whacking for a good week and a half.
Other members of the public like to address the board on this, on this topic? So I'd like to bring it back to this board if you have any specific questions or what you believe our next step should be.
There's, you know, alluding to the possibility that this could be, like, are the solar panels, do they, do they have any, like, if water falls on them, do they discharge anything into the ground? That was something that was mentioned. Is there anything you can provide on that?
I can tell you that it doesn't happen. I don't have a white paper on it, but, I mean, there's plenty of NEC issues if that happens. I mean, obviously, it's a faulty solar panel. There's, it's, it's news to me that chemicals are leaching into the grounds from solar panels. And I've heard a lot of those types of things as I sit at these tables.
Mr. Chair, one other question.
Sure.
So have you given, given any consideration to the thought of preserving the tree stumps? Because that's where the carbon is stored, that's the carbon sequestration, so--
Yep, so we've done multiple carbon sequestration calculations as another reason why we shouldn't be building a project. And the turnback on the amount of carbon offset versus the trees that are putting carbon, or taking carbon out of the air, is typically like a three-to-four-week period of life. It's not five, six years of loss of, of carbon replacement versus the trees that come down offsetting. And I can definitely send you guys the same calculations that we've done on multiple projects to prove that.
The question was, are you gonna stump, or are you gonna leave the stumps?
We prefer not to leave the stumps. One, it's an O&amp;M issue, two, it's an issue from structural design. If you have a post that has to go in the ground and there's stump in the way, it's, it can undermine the structure. And again, this was an old apple farm, so there's small, tiny trees on the site. It's not large-growth forest.
So if I, I'd like to, Bill, ask Mr. Maynard a question, if I might. So, there's a lot of information here. I don't believe any member of the board is an expert on any of this. And I wanna be cognizant of the court's opinion on this, so are we able to seek outside assistance to review this project and also make certain recommendations about things that would be associated specifically to, you know, vegetation barriers, fences, setbacks, so forth and so on?
I think the court has not precluded this board from considering this project as it would any project in the normal course.
Okay.
If that includes seeking outside consultancy assistance, you're able to do that.
Thank you very much.
So, what's the board's-- I would like to suggest, Mr. Chairman, that we ask for an opinion from town council as to whether or not the frontage requirement applies in this case. Because I'm troubled by that. The frontage is actually on a road in Connecticut. If this were a residential subdivision going in, it wouldn't be allowed because it would be, would not have frontage and would be considered a non-buildable lot, okay? We have a lot of lots in town that are isolated like this for whatever reason over the years, but I would like to get a formal opinion as to whether or not the frontage requirement can be enforced in this particular case. I also recognize that DPW has not yet given comments on this, and I haven't seen anything formally from the town of Somers saying that they will provide emergency services to the site, and I think we'd like to see that in writing.
Given that your fire chief has already made a comment and has asked for two things to be changed on the plans, it seems like he's supporting servicing the site, correct?
He's being silent on the, on whether or not the service to the site is adequate, whether he's gonna service it by driving through Connecticut, whether Somers is gonna service it. That's still confusing to me. If Somers is going to agree to service the site, then they should be willing to put that in writing.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman--
Yeah, I have a question. Hopefully, if you build this, it lasts forever, but let's say something happens to the business industry, and it gets to the point where you have to abandon the site, what happens to all the equipment that's already been installed?
You have a decommissioning bond.
We proposed in the application a decommissioning agreement, which will put up a bond or money or whatever, however it works, and negotiate it, that will be in place prior to the establishment of the site, and will be calculated to be hopefully sufficient so that if the developer does not decommission the site itself and remove the panels and the infrastructure from it, the town has the money to hire someone to do that. And at least currently, the thinking is that there is a fair amount of recyclable value of the equipment that's in there now. What it will be 20 years from now is, you know, subject to mathematical formulas, but it's, it's the standard protection that a municipality or town seeks to obtain in terms of ensuring that they don't have to spend any taxpayer money to take the array down
All right, so what you're saying is, whether they would be doing is obligated to put up a bond in a size certainly equal to or greater than what the amount would be to remove every bit of equipment sometime within 20 years, 30 years, whatever the time period is, the life expectancy of this?
Correct.
Yep, the money is held in escrow throughout the duration of the project. The estimate is up on the table right now, or up on the screen.
There are actually people who do this for a living, calculate these things, and they've obtained a calculation.
So what do we have for a number?
About $103,000.
To remove everything?
There's 27-plus thousand dollars worth of recyclable materials, and I would argue that there's a lot more. The amount of steel and copper that's on these sites is significant. You can see a full breakdown of pounds of steel, et cetera, pounds of copper, the amount of wire on-site. There's 50, $60,000 transformers that are sitting there that have value, can be repowered. There's plenty of equipment value that are on these sites.
I can only talk conceptually, I--
I understand.
I can't speak to any of the numbers, I mean, it fluctuates with market conditions.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
But, but I can say with a high level of confidence that there's obviously gonna be a business model by somebody 15 years from now to take these things apart and make money off them. Because that's about when the first ones are gonna start being decommissioned or repowered. And when you repower them, there's still a lot of steel that comes out, there's still a lot of copper that comes out. Somebody's gonna figure it out. Maybe it's me.
Yes.
You'd rather just sit up front row?
Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. I just wanted to make a quick correction. This parcel has no frontage in either Connecticut or Massachusetts. The only access to get to this parcel is through another parcel in Connecticut, which is located off of Bilton Road. So, these are two separate parcels of land, so you literally have to drive through one parcel to get to another. It's not like it has frontage on Bilton Road in Connecticut, because it doesn't. The other parcel does. Thank you.
Condi, did you wanna add something?
I think Todd actually addressed it. One of the concerns that comes out of our meetings is what is going to happen when decommissioning occurs, and there's this plethora of steel and copper and wire, is if you have so many solar array projects going online, suddenly there's sort of a glut in the market. So, that is a concern. I would urge--
What do you mean by a glut in the market? Too much steel?
We have too much product, yeah. What do you do with it?
I mean, it's a commodity that's traded--
Of course it is.
Never too much steel, then.
There's never too much steel.
And copper, everybody wants to steal copper out of vacant houses, I know, and I understand. But, again, when you have so much, when you have an abundance that comes on the market, that, that affects the price.
I mean, you compare that to what's put into a four-story steel building? I mean, you're talking about a small amount of steel compared to what's put in a building? It's, they aren't comparable.
But again, when you have so many projects that have come online in New England--
Steel still gets melted down and turned into something else every day.
So what I'd like to--
So what I'd like to propose for the board, so we'll, we'll keep the hearing, we'll continue the hearing. Wonderful presentation, I thought it was really well done. Thank you for the audio, for the visual, it made things easier.
Techy guy, I guess.
But I think it's, this is a lot for us to take in. I think we all need some time to kind of formulate what we want to see for additional information.
Okay.
So. So I would propose to this board, so we have a planning session on December 3rd. I would hope that we would be able to have any issues or concerns that we would like addressed, which have not yet been stated, to Connie by that time. We might set aside some time during that session just for a general discussion of additional items that we might want to see information on, not to debate the, the question, but, you know, going back, reviewing this on LCAT, going through additional materials, I might want more information on this or more information on that type of situation. I know we can't, we can formulate some things that we might want to get more information on and not debate that issue. So I don't know how others feel about that.
I think that's a good timeline.
Yeah.
And that way, we can get the information, the questions to the applicant in time for them to address them.
And then they might be able to at least address some of our concerns that have already been expressed, Somers being one, the frontage being another question that we certainly would rely on Mr. Maynard to, to do for us.
Agreed.
So I guess I would be looking for a motion to continue the hearing to our next hearing date, which is December 17th.
Before doing that, I'd like to ask if we can get a copy of your PowerPoint.
Yes.
Okay, if you could.
Yeah.
Get that to Connie, and then she can send it to us as the proper way to do it.
Yeah, there's plenty, as you can see on the transvision, there's plenty of paper copies, but we can easily either send it electronically or get thumb drives, or what do you want to do, Steve?
There it is.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So do I have a motion to continue?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to continue, which has been seconded.
Make sure it's saved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, hearing none. Thank you very much.
So I understand we're going to get your comments back through Connie in time for us to come before you again at the next hearing in December, and we'll have hopefully submitted things in response to those before then.
That's our goal.
Do you have a timeline of DPW coming?
I don't.
It's when, when they give them is when we get them.
Yes.
No, I mean, seriously.
I love that scheduling.
I mean, it is, but yes.
We did put this package in about a month and a half ago, so if we, do you want us to do something to, you know, send it directly to them or send it to Tom or?
They, they have it, okay? This was, this was stamped in on the 22nd of October, so it's less than a month. But in any case, they have the information, but they, they go to their consultant, okay, to review it, and it, it, the timeline is, you can guarantee, you know, they're a separate department, and they do what they can with what they've got.
I understand.
I think whether or not you have enough time, we will, if we have together by our December 3rd meeting, you'll have two weeks, okay? Depending on the questions, that may or may not be enough time.
So that's 17?
But we'll reschedule it for the 17th.
17.
Yeah.
Six o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number 14. Before you start, so Mr. Maynard, could you also join us at the table for this next item?
Sure.
Thank you.
Case ZN 2019-03, ground-mounted photovoltaic, volt, hey, volt tank system, moratorium. And notwithstanding any other provision in the zoning and general bylaws, to the contrary, the town hereby adopts a temporary moratorium on the use of land or the building of structures for ground-mounted photovoltaic, I always struggle with that word, systems that are at least 40,000 square feet in an area of over 250 kilowatt of energy production. The moratorium shall be ineffective through October 22nd, 2020, or until such times the town adopts zoning bylaw amendments that regulates the installation of ground-mounted solar energy systems, including residential zoning districts, whichever occurs earlier. Petitioner, Town of East Long Meadow Planning Board, Representative Constance Routers, Director, Department of Planning, Community Development, 60 Center Square, East Long Meadow Mass.
So Connie, do you wish to introduce this item?
Well, we had a, a discussion about the legal case that was before us in communicating with our town council. We felt that it might be in the town's best interest or the planning board's best interest for future development to establish a moratorium on new applications for ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. So we went to town council, and they, of course, referred the petition to the planning board for discussion in public hearing. So here we are.
And so this is, the moratorium really is specifically so that we can develop appropriate?
Bylaw.
Bylaw.
That's right, it's a two-step process. One is consideration of passage of a moratorium, which is in itself, I think, a zoning bylaw. And the second is during the, the term of that moratorium, to develop and consider a set of zoning bylaws to better regulate, more efficiently perhaps, regulate the construction of ground-based solar facilities in the Town of East Long Meadow.
And, and this petition then will go to town council?
Correct.
Who will then have to act on it?
That's right.
Okay. So this is a, before I open it to the public, do any other members of the board have any questions? So this is a public hearing, so I'd ask members of the public if they wish they discussed or to have any comments on this issue, please step forward. Hearing none.
Um, is, does this include the people that are trying to get the solar in now, or is it for future use?
It will not relate to applications already on file with the planning department. So no, it won't affect those that you heard about today.
And I would just state, I'm all for it. I think it's good, we could take a breath and think about things and have a good plan, because we've got to adjust things currently.
I, I will say a couple of things. It is an approach that is being used by other towns in western Massachusetts without challenge, so far as I know. And the discussion at the town council, I don't know what was taken, was a favorable discussion in referring it to the planning board.
So the motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So a motion made, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, hearing none, passes.
I know you voted on aye, but can you extend it if you need be, the moratorium, or just what happens after that?
There would have, there would have to be a, a further petition, a further motion, that is, and a further vote.
Okay, so you.
First by the planning board and then the town council. The expectation is that this planning board will ultimately be able to consider a new set of bylaws with respect to this issue before October of next year.
Thank you very much. Number 15. So this is a review of the proposed 2020 planning board meeting schedule?
You should have a new one today.
Oh, we have to take a vote, yeah.
We have to take a vote on this.
On the moratorium.
Moratorium.
On the moratorium.
I thought we did. No, we voted to close public hearing.
Oh, thank you, okay.
I'll make, I'll make a, make a motion to.
Entire.
Accept the petition as written and forward it to town council for action.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So a motion made, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say nay. Hearing none, that passes. Thank you. So this is really more for informational purposes, or do we need to vote to adopt?
You need to vote to adopt, but it is for informational purposes. We'll post it on the website so that the development community is aware and other members who might be bringing applications before the planning board of the deadlines, as well as the date of the meeting.
So do I have a motion to approve the schedule?
So moved.
So a second?
I'll second that.
Just trying to make sure it doesn't fall on his birthday.
Vacation.
Actually, no, it will not, because I have, no, it won't, yeah, it won't impact that or.
So we have a motion made, it's been seconded to adopt the schedule for 2020. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Hearing none, that passes. So.
Thank you to Beth, Bethany. This is a very tedious process.
Yeah.
Because you're calculating when the, the applications have to come in, based on the number of days it has to, before the, between the acceptance and submitting it to the newspaper, crafting the ads, sending the legal notice, but the notice to the abutters, as well as the agenda placement. So you're doing a lot of manipulating of the calendar, and she's done this for three boards.
Thank you.
One, one question. November 10th, 2020, that's election day?
That was November 3rd.
November 3rd?
We have vetted that numerous times. Yes.
So I would check with your calendars, because it won't be as regular. Some of the, some of the weeks will be like the first week, or it'll be the second week, just to avoid those election dates.
Okay.
Also, it'll change.
And you'll give us sufficient notice of that.
Yeah.
Would this, is this going to intersect then with town council?
Yeah, it will. But we're in different rooms.
I am not.
All right.
Sorry, Don.
Item 16, it's a follow-up to a letter of concern from Alice Whitmer, 81 Harwood Road. I think we've seen the communications.
It was just a simple.
Yeah.
Just to close it, because you want to acknowledge that you've addressed it, and for the record.
So discussion of zoning reform legislation, is this something we can probably put off? Or is, no, you wanted to address this?
Yeah, let me, let me do this real briefly.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, basically, Governor Baker has proposed legislation to, quote, increase housing stock, particularly in the eastern part of the state. What involves, you have a document, I think it's been sent to you earlier, is basically removing the supermajority requirement for many of the contingencies where it's now required. Not all, but, but many, particularly those with regard to adopting more density in housing, okay? Pioneer Valley Planning Commission was asked to endorse this proposal, which is before the legislature now, which will probably not be acted on this year, be acted on next I was surprised at the vehemence of the opposition to this from certain towns, representatives at the meeting. And as a result, we did not vote to either endorse or not endorse, but I had suggested to the commission that we take it back to our planning boards and discuss it and decide whether or not the town, individual town wants to support this. And it may also go to town council for their opinion on it. So that's why I brought it here, and I don't know if you had a chance to read the summary document. If anybody really wants to see the entire thing, I, I've got a marked up version of what, this will change the zoning act, 41A, okay? It will change it significantly. And I just wanted to get people's opinion, if you had a chance to look at this, whether or not you think that this is something that the Town of East Long Meadow should support. So I would know how to vote if we, if it goes to a vote at the, at the commission. And I'm not asking for a formal vote, I'm just asking for your opinions on it. Has everyone had a chance to see this?
Yes.
Come in.
I tend to be in favor of it because I see the housing issue being an important issue at a statewide level. I think this, this will obviously take some control away from the ability, it'll make it easier for projects to go through. I look at, though, the larger impact that it might have, and the potential positive impact it might have in the growth and development of the state. It's important to note in this kind of document, summary document that I was, I was reading earlier, the legislation does not mandate that any town adopt these zoning practices. It simply just removes the barriers for the communities that want to act on this. So we, as a community, can still exercise, to my knowledge, correct me if I'm wrong, the two-thirds supermajority.
No.
Four-fifths.
No.
Four-fifths.
No.
Okay.
No, you, you're not required to adopt anything, but if you want to adopt any of these, it will be by a simple majority. The town cannot override that supermajority provision.
My, yeah, my, okay, I thought that you can still have the two-thirds in place, but then other communities can.
No.
Okay.
Statewide. Well, this is more of an issue in a town meeting town, because as we all know, it's democracy, nobody ever packs town meeting, but we know it happens. And you've got a town with.
You say that with some sarcasm.
Yes. With a quorum of 100.
Yeah.
Okay? It's, it can be easy to get more than a third of, of, more than 33 votes to oppose a project like this, okay? And, or, or more than 66 votes to, to approve it, or more, I mean, more than, more than 51 votes to approve, I should say. And town meeting towns are very concerned about that, because, you know, town council, you know who the people are, they're speaking publicly, they're voting publicly, but town meeting, you never know who's going to show up, and, and that's a concern to them. The two-thirds they see as, as a protection to them.
Is this something that you could present to the town council for their opinion?
Yeah.
At a future meeting of the town council?
I can, and I think they're going to ask, what does the planning board think?
Well, I'm not ready to give you the answer to it, so.
Okay, fine. So.
I'm not really ready, yeah.
Okay, you, you see the other side of it sometimes.
Yeah, I do.
You know, we, we need, I, I'd like you to think about it, and maybe at our, our next.
December 15th.
Planning meeting, we can, or a planning meeting, we can discuss it, because it's part of planning.
Good, thank you.
So, as your professional planner?
Yep.
We support this after.
Okay.
Item 18, late recording, new singular wireless. I was wondering why someone was sitting back there this whole time.
I don't want to hear from you, I know it's not an open meeting, but happy to do.
Sure.
So I'm Greg Sampson, I'm the promoter, Nick, Ed Perry's been here before the board before, so. So we had a special permit that was issued last year and was for work involving replacement of some antennas on an existing cellular site. And apparently, it was a screw-up. The contractor did not record the permit, record the special permit before the building permit was issued. The work was done, completed, and the special permit was recorded afterwards. So, so it was, it was mistaken, frankly, that just happened. I think there was a discussion of what the board should do about it. We're just hoping it can be seen as kind of an administrative mistake that goes in the record. I mean, there's, there's nothing that really can be done at this point, so unless.
Mr. Maynard, do you have an opinion on this?
I don't think there's anything to preclude the board from dealing with it as an administrative mistake and fixing it retroactively.
So does it require a vote of this board?
I believe it does.
And, and what would the vote be?
Well, I take that back.
I mean, we already voted on.
The amendment has been approved.
Yeah.
Maybe a case of no harm, no foul.
So would we just, maybe just take a vote to reaffirm our initial decision?
I think that would work, in recognition of the position of the applicant, yes.
So moved.
So I have a second?
I will second that.
So we have a motion made, seconded, any discussion?
No, all in favor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a safe, have a safe drive.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for bailing me out with your chair.
You're welcome. Oh, Mr. Fitzgerald. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. How are you?
How are you?
So, we need to, help me, Connie. So, O'Brien, why don't you just kind of fill the board, fill the board in.
Well, I guess, at this point in time, we, all of the documents that were necessary, there were a number of documents that had to have been recorded, everything was recorded. There were some documents that the irrevocable letter of credit needed to be cleaned up, because there was some changes that had not been inserted, and weren't then inserted. We had the bank sign off on that irrevocable letter, the performance agreement, that is. So, that was signed off on by the, by Munson Savings Bank, and all of that's been submitted. And then, at the last meeting, you took a vote to release all of the lots, and I guess this evening would be the formal signing of the actual release of the covenant. So, then we can take that document and record that at the registry, and then we have several lots that would close within the next, within the next month. And then, there's a number of them that would then close sometime in January and February of next year, so, you know.
So, it's not going to require a vote, because we've already taken a vote, we're just to be signing the document?
Right. Pass them on.
Pass them on, okay.
And, house cleaning issue. Can you please tell your developer to clean it up? He's got piles of stumps and trees down and everything, and I've talked to him a thousand times, and yeah, I'll get to it, I'll get to it, I'll get to it, I get it. But, you know, and obviously, biases can be, because I live right across the street from it, and I'm staring at it every single day, but I'm not the only person talking about it. They all come to me, and I say, listen, you guys talk to him for a change. Just, just clean it up. I mean, just, just so it looks like he's got houses for sale.
Okay, all right.
So, we're going to sign this. So, item 20 is, was not ready with all the appropriate documentation. So, I did, I informed Connie that I felt that it was in the best interest of the board that we waited until all of the documentation was in place.
Good idea.
I don't wish to make exceptions, because if you make an exception for one, then it just continues ad nauseam. And so, as George knows, I was a member of the charter commission, and I think charter commission, we felt was, we need process, and we need to follow the process. So, I've asked Connie over, who has done a wonderful job about following the process. And unfortunately, she's the deliverer of the news sometimes, and has to bear the, bear the brunt of some bad news, but I really believe it's important that we follow the process. So, the one thing that I always like to follow up on, and I know we're getting late, is the status of the mixed-use proposal for Chestnut Street, the zoning and so forth. So, where do we sit with that?
Are we done with Brian?
Oh, yeah, I'm just signing.
So, before Brian leaves, Derek, you didn't know, you have your...
Yes, yes.
Oh, thank you. So...
Will you bring a candy bar or something?
So, is everyone here signing their, this document of your own free act of deed?
Yes.
Yes.
There's actually only one signature that he has to notify, that wasn't yours.
Okay, well, I just did it.
On that form and this form. This one is the only one that Russ has to sign, so you all are off the...
So, no one signs this but Russ?
Just Russ, and then Fitzgerald.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. So, where do we stand?
On the mixed-use...
On the mixed-use.
You know, maybe we could have Mr. Page give that update.
Mr. Page?
I'd love to.
Yeah.
I don't mind talking.
We know that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
No, I don't mind. Can you hear me better up here, or do you want me to say? Okay. Ralph Page, I am a member on the Planning Matters Subcommittee of the Town Council. It's been brought to us to look at 330 Chestnut Street by law that was provided. We've done a full go-through, we have made some suggestions, I mean, some possible changes. Those have been gone through. We should be meeting on December 2nd, I believe.
Monday?
We did, yes, Monday, December 2nd. We looked at the table of uses, and so what we're trying to do is just compile all of our suggestions for changes together, and we're hopeful that within the next meeting or two, couple of meetings, we should be through with it and sending it on to the town council.
Okay.
Do you want to tell them that it's been called the Mixed Use Village District? Do you know this?
I did, yeah.
Do you all know this?
There was a suggestion that the name be changed to a Mixed Use Village District, based on the criteria, instead of a mixed-use, like an overlay, which may be for like the center of town, it would be different parameters. Any other thoughts, questions?
What's in the name?
So, I want to thank members of the board who've had the opportunity to go to some of these Subcommittee meetings, I appreciate your efforts. Very much.
I want to go to more of them, but they are always right at the wrong time.
Yeah. I would have gone to every one of them.
So, Connie, anything else that we need to address, or can we adjourn? Bethany, where else at?
We just need to have a decided...
So, do I have a motion?
We're not, we're not going to...
We're not going to get seconded.